And the board will now come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Iggracia. Alderman Colder. Alderman Rice.
President Rice.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderman Switzer.
Here.
Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Altenberg.
Present.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Grass.
Here.
President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderman Switzer. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Twenty-one present, you have corn.
Thank you, Sharita. Uh, with, uh, we'll move to line two, the prayer today will be leaden prayer by Pastor Chuck Norris from Saint James AME, Pastor, please proceed.
Okay, thank you for extending the invitation. Uh, all hearts and minds are clear. Uh, God, we come before you this day to just thank you. Your, your word says in the thirty-fourth Psalm that, that David had sought the Lord and was delivered from all his fears. And so, God, I pray right now, as these men and women have come together to conduct the business of the city, oh, God, we thank you for having sought your presence first and to calm our doubts and to soothe our fears. And so, God, we just pray right now that you is the God of peace, the God of love, the God of understanding and kindness and wisdom, the, the God of forgiveness, the God that continues to make a way for us out of no way. Oh, God, we pray right now that you might come in this place, that your spirit might be in this place. Oh, God, that the decisions that are made, that they might be those, Lord, that may be difficult to make, but, oh, God, that you may soothe the way, that you may make a way, that your peace might sit still in this place. And then, God, we just ask a special blessing over our entire city, Lord. We pray, oh, God, that the, the violence, Lord, that it might start to ease off, Lord, that we pray, oh, God, that this eat my abate. Oh, God, we pray that the resources that are needed, Lord, that they might go forth. And we'll just continue to give you all the praise, the glory, and the honor. It is in your Son, Jesus the Christ, we pray, we believe, and we thank you, God, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. Pleasure having you here, sir, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, do we have any special order of the day today, no resolutions? With that being said, we will move to, uh, introduction of honored guests. All right, Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Myers, my special guest.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you, Greg. I saw your son this week, he delivers my beer, does a very good job, thank you. All right, any other introduction of honored guests? I see no other hands. Okay. That will move to approval of the minutes.
Approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have a, Alderman from the twenty-fifth is a late arrival.
I, thank you, Mr. President, uh, today is National Veggie Day, Fresh Veggie Day. Uh, please, uh, if anyone sees the alderman from the twenty-third ward, please give him, uh, some fresh soup or salad today.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on approval of minutes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, I move that we approve of the minutes from Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
That can second.
We have a second from the, uh, Alderman from the fourteenth, I believe is first. It's been moved by Alderman twenty-fifth, second by Alderman from the fourteenth. Uh, we approve the minutes of June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Any discussion? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those, motion carries. Reporters, city officials.
Reporters, city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
All right, with Spence with line item seven. Uh, board bill, would anyone like to take any, well, actually, I will. We're going to remove, uh, board bills nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one from the informal calendar. Uh, please place them at the end of the third reading calendar, Sharita.
So noted.
Anyone else, would anyone else like to take any bills off of any informal calendars? All right. We will go to first reading of board bills.
Board Bill fifty-four, introduced by Alderman Clark Hubbard. Pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three-three-three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three-nine-four, an ordinance directing the director's streets installs speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty-two-hundred block of Vernon between the intersections of Vernon Avenue and Union Boulevard and Vernon Avenue and Claritin Avenue. Board Bill fifty-five sponsored by Alderman Altenberg, an ordinance to amend City of St. Louis revised code's chapter four-one-eight, zero-five-five, four-point-one-eight-point-two-two-five, four-point-one-eight-point-three-one-five, four-point-one-nine-point-one-two-zero, four-point-one-nine-point-one-three-zero, four-point-one-nine-point-one-four-zero, and four-point-one-nine-point-one-nine, I'm sorry, one-seven-zero, so as to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees of the City of Saint Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan, but not until such time as amendments to Missouri Revised Statutes eight-seven-point-one-four-zero, eight-seven-point-one-four-five, eight-seven-point-one-five-five, eight-six, I'm sorry, eight-seven-point-two-six-zero, and eight-seven-point-three-five-zero have become law to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees for the Saint Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan and contain an effective date. Board Bill.
But, I'm sorry, please proceed.
Board Bill fifty-six sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Affortment, wherein the Board of Alderman authorizes the receipt of and appropriate sub-grantee agreement between the City of Saint Louis and State of Missouri Department of Economic Development and Missouri Housing Development Commission, funds by the federal government under Consolidated Appropriations Act twenty-twenty-one Public Law one-one-six-dash-two-six-zero, section five-zero-one, to establish the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for emergency rental and housing assistance payments by local governments and contain an emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Okay, reference to committee?
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill fifty-four, to Public Safety, Board Bill fifty-five, and to the HUDs Committee, Board Bill fifty-six, that's the extent of reference to committee.
Okay, Alderman twenty-third, you have your hand up, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'd like to suspend the rules to, uh, and this will go to the, uh, end of the, uh, resolution calendar, but to suspend the rules for the jail oversight committee to re-look at Mike Milton and Reverend Darryl Gray. So, yes, possible, um, uh, possible, uh, to put him on the, uh, the oversight jail oversight. And it will go back to committee, but it'd be, I believe it goes to the resolution there.
Okay, um, a couple of things, uh, 'cause I believe Mr. Milton was voted down by the board, I don't believe we can redo that vote.
Yeah, we can, it would go back to committee, right now it's just to suspend the rules, and then it would go back to committee.
Okay. Okay, there is, uh, you got a resolution number for this with the clerk?
Uh, no, I worked with him, and he said that he would have that over there, so. Yeah, we can delay it another week and.
Uh, yeah, 'cause actually, this was line item seven, wasn't brought to my attention, is where we should be doing this.
That's not true. That's not true, he assured me, he talked to you, and you.
Well, he mentioned it, yeah, but I, I figured that we do have a resolution number. Uh, we, we do have meetings, you know, we have a regular scheduled meeting next week, it'd probably be best to do that at this point, not to blind.
Well, I wish he would have said that yesterday, again, you know, I, I do, uh, you know, I make these calls and try to get this stuff taken care of, and uh, you know, it's been, uh, you know, and, and again, to say that, to say that you haven't heard this, it's untrue.
Point of order. Point of order.
Point of order, what is your point of order, Alderman?
Chairman has stated the position, as we shall move forward, end of conversation.
No, there, no, okay, but.
Thank you very much. Alderman from the twenty-third, I believe you spoke, clerk, mentioned it to me yesterday, you have letters of appointment, uh, I believe, is that what you have?
Right, yes, I do.
Okay, uh, but I believe if we're going to suspend the rules, I don't know if we can suspend the rules just to read letters of appointment. I believe that we have to do this in the form of a resolution. Uh, and I would, as I said before, let's do this properly, get that done in the proper form, and we'll take it up at next week's meeting, sir.
Okay, I wish the clerk would have, uh, told me that since I've been working.
Well, I feel like we'll have a discussion after the meeting, clerk, you and myself, all right, sir?
That's fine.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we are now at line item thirteen, uh, second reading, reporters standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee with the DuPont's recommendation for Bill forty-six as amended sponsored by Alderman Tyus, an ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreement and debt services expenses of the Parking Division for the Treasures Office for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, in the sum of eighteen million, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-seventy, I'm sorry, eighteen million, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars and eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for capital improvements of one million, six-hundred, sixteen thousand dollars and six-hundred and, I'm sorry, one million, six-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars and six-hundred, I'm sorry, let's try this again, one million, six-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars and six-hundred-and-fifteen, I'm sorry, that's all messed up.
Take your time, take your time. This year is excited, there's only one item on the second reading this week, I suppose the last week's.
One million, six-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and six-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, I'm sorry, I'm all confused, Lisa is laughing at me, it is just, sorry.
All right, let's gather ourselves.
Okay, one million, six-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for capital improvement containing an emergency clause. That's the second reading, report to standing committee.
All right, thank you very much. We will dispense with line items fourteen through sixteen. Uh, third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six, forty-three, forty-one as amended, forty-nine as amended, and fifty-one.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
President Ballmer.
I'm sorry, I, I was looking down at, Alderman Peel, you have your hand up, I apologize.
Thank you.
I was following along, go, you're recognized, please proceed.
Yes, uh, I would like to have the board bill sixteen and twenty-three put onto the, uh, third reading calendar. I believe that we should, uh, take these redevelopment agreements and individually vote on them instead of having, uh, an automatic consent, as we've seen in the most recent situation, um, that we should, uh, look at these board bills, um, a lot closer. So I would like to see if those two bills, um, that are asking for abatement, be put onto the third reading calendar.
Sharita make note of that? You have the board bill? What, the repeat the board bill numbers one more time, Alderman?
Uh, board bill sixteen and twenty-three.
So sixteen and twenty-three, you have this, Sharita?
So noted.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much, thank you, Alderman. Yeah, we are, we're back to Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr.
Third reading consent.
I move that we pass the third reading consent calendar.
Okay, entertain a second? Second, I believe, was Alderman from the ninth? Okay, it's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, second by the Alderman from the ninth, that we adopt our third reading consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
I'm gonna abstain, since I didn't get a chance to look through, I'm sorry, abstain.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Switzer. Twenty-two, aye votes, and one abstain.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, by your vote, you sustain the motion, the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, third read and finally passed the aforementioned board bills. Third reading, reported engrossment, and final passage.
Board Bill one, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Davidson, Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principles of the city's bond indebtedness, establishing city tax rates, and making appropriation for current, current year expenses of the city government contained in emergency clause.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on third reading and final passage, Board Bill one, as amended.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt Board Bill number one, as amended.
entertain a second? Okay, it's been moved by the Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth. Uh, please proceed.
Uh, our, uh, Board Bill one, as amended, for our annual budget for the year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, beginning July one, has been vetted through the Ways and Means Committee, without, uh, all the departments of, uh, significant size have come before us, they've explained their budget to us, and why their requests were listed as such. We only had one concern, actually, two. One was, uh, equipment for the fire department, but our director, uh, for budget, Paul Payne, uh, showed us where those items were listed in different places in the fireman's budget, and that was satisfied. The second one was, uh, having an additional staff person with STLTV, as you know, because of pandemic and the increase of transparency to the public, they needed another video person to make sure that they could cover all of the tasks before them. Uh, that was sent to, uh, back to the Board of E and A, it was approved and brought back to us. That is our amendment to that initial Board Bill one, and, uh, we believe that, uh, it is sufficient, this board bill is sufficient to, uh, carry out the needs of our city, most especially giving our employees a raise, and, and also, they're going to be getting a bonus. And I ask for favorable consideration, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any discussion, I see Alderman from the eighteenth, Alderman Todd, you're recognized. Please, uh, please unmute yourself, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you both of all the people. Um, I would just like to, uh, make just a comment on, uh, uh, I haven't actually read the budget closely, but I, I didn't, uh, uh, I don't think we have, I didn't, uh, I don't think we have some of the things that my, my constituents prioritize, uh, for example, uh, drug treatment is one of the things, uh, I think we should prioritize, and that would reduce crime over some of the other things that we've been, uh, working on, as well as, uh, more money for, uh, tearing out the buildings that can't be saved and fixing, putting boarding up those for only two years that can't be saved and putting windows in them after that. Uh, also, uh, for the parks, I don't think there's enough money in that budget for supervision for all, one hundred and ten of our parks, at least two supervisors, as well as supplies and, uh, equipment, and, uh, also, um, cutting the grass. I, I think we, uh, the, uh, Far Street needs to, uh, have full-time workers, they need to be paid the same as the police officers and other, uh, and other, and all the employees should be paid the same as the police officers, so that we can find people, uh, 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 'cause everybody, including, uh, refugee people should be paid a hun- whatever the police officers are paid, and so, uh, I want to go on record, saying I can't support a budget unless, uh, it, all employees are paid equally.
All right, thank you, sir, your remarks have been noted, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion, thank you.
All right, it is moved, and second, that we third read and finally passed Board Bill one, as amended.
Madam Clerk. Yeah, roll call.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer. Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Bacaro.
I have abstained.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Abstained.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Switzer. Alderman Spencer. Nineteen, aye votes, one no vote, and two abstain.
Mr. President.
Uh, I, yes, I, you have your hand up, yes, Alderman, please proceed.
I would like to change my vote to present.
Sharita, please make note of that, fourteenth is now present.
So noted, that is eighteen, aye votes, one no vote, two abstain, and one voted present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, by your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the nineteenth, and Fred finally passed Board Bill one, as amended. Thank you. We will now go to third reading, report of engrossment and final passage. So, we have, what, this next, thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Board Bill thirty-nine, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the Collector Revenue's Office pursuant to section eight-two-point-six-one-zero, revised statutes of Missouri by repealing number seven-one-one-one-two, allocating cer- certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Alderman from the third, you're recognized on third reading and final passage, Board Bill thirty-nine, as amended.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a simple board bill, once again.
Alderman, please make a motion.
I'm sorry, uh, I move that we put board bill, what, what was it again?
That's thirty-nine, as amended.
All right, I, I move that we put thirty-nine as amendment, uh, we, we recognize Board Bill thirty-nine as amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, entertain a second? Uh, I didn't catch the second, Alderman, it's Alderman from the ninth. All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman of the, uh, ninth, that we third read and finally passed Board Bill thirty-nine, as amended, please proceed, Alderman.
All right, thank you, uh, once again, this is just a simple board bill, one that, uh, mirrors, uh, the entire pay bill that we just spoke about, we're just ensuring that the city employees have now what we would consider, uh, some sort of a standard raise, a three percent raise, and a two-thousand-dollar bonus payment, one-time bonus payment, uh, for the city employment, uh, city employees that work there for the Collector of Revenue.
All right, uh, any further discussion, Alderman from the eighteenth, you're recognized.
I would like to have roll call.
Certainly, sir, so noted.
Right, 'cause I oppose, uh, two-thousand-dollar raise for all employees, but I don't know any place where all employees, uh, deserve a raise, plus I think all the employees should be, uh, concerned about the fact that we haven't had this refuse picked up. We should also be concerned about the fact that we have, and that poor people in these jails, they could be harmed with their families, they don't have any money, and we're still talking, uh, we're giving people who already have money, more money. So, uh, and also, uh, and, uh, and also, so those are the main concerns I have, is that, uh, and also, the, uh, services, some workers are doing a great job, and I respect workers, but some workers, our supervisors don't respect this, the eighteenth ward, when they leave this trash here, they leave this tall grass, uh, we have bathrooms that, uh, haven't been working, that, we have a shell, but we don't have toilet, uh, working, uh, so those are the, uh, the same thing with drugs, we got sick peoples, nobody speak up, when, when, when they abort of all the people, we passed a resolution saying drug addiction, any form of drug addiction is a illness. There, uh, we should have city workers who are getting, uh, should be just as concerned about themselves getting a bonus, and themselves getting a raise, they should be concerned about, oh, the least of these, those who can't do to themselves, they should be out there advocating. They should be out there advocating. They should be out here uh advocating that we get better services. Yeah, and and so we all in this together, but we just cannot be just concerned about what's in it for me. So, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for all of you.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Uh, please note, Alderman, that all these uh third readings will have roll calls, sir. So all the books, okay, those roll calls are automatic for all these third reading. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Any further discussion? All right, Alderman from the third, you're recognized to close.
Uh, thank you. Um, once again, simple pay bill. I was just trying to make sure that the city employees who worked through this pandemic, individuals who worked for the city for a very long time and have not had a raise um now have some sort of a standard raise aside from the one point five that you get based on average. So that um once again, I ask for your favorable consideration. I renew my notes. I renew my motion, Mr. President.
All right. Uh, Alderman from the fourteenth, you have your hand up.
Yes, I have a comment, uh not so much a question.
Uh, please proceed. We moved to close, but I'll
okay.
We'll entertain your entertain your comment.
Um, hopefully, we can do more for our employees in the near future. Um, you know, I know uh the Alderman from the eighteenth has concerns. I have to say that uh I've had a crew working at Christie Park all week uh in the heat and they they were diligent and working hard. I know they were way far behind. It's been a long time since it's had a cut, but I want to commend them and uh the other city employees that have taken the time and and hung in there during this pandemic. So I think we need to recognize those that have worked so hard also. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Alderman. All right. It has been uh moved and seconded. We third read and finally passed board bill thirty-nine as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Middlebrook.
Hi.
Alderman Bosley.
Hi.
Alderman Evans.
Hi.
Alderman Page.
Hi.
Alderman Ingracia.
Hi.
Alderman Colder.
Hi.
Alderman Rice.
Hi.
Alderman Gunther.
Hi.
Alderman Stevens.
Hi.
Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Hi.
Alderman Odenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Peel.
Hi.
Alderman Todd.
Hello.
Alderman Davis.
Hi.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman McCarroll.
Again, I have abstained. My wife works there.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Orion.
Hi.
Alderman Kong.
Hi.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Hi.
Alderman Boyd.
Hi.
Alderman Grass.
Hi.
President Ballmer.
Hi.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Nineteen I votes, one voted no, one abstained, and one voted present.
All right. Thank you. By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderman of the third and third read and finally passed board bill thirty-nine as amended.
Board Bill forty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee work and relationships between the city of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves leaves of absence, authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven one zero nine nine allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provision of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Alderman third, you're recognized on third reading, final passage, board bill forty-eight. Alderman from the third.
Hey, Bill, we have a we have a few of those today.
Okay, please make a motion to adopt.
So sorry about that. I thought, yeah, my my phone just got unmuted. Uh, I I moved that we adopt board bill. What was it? Forty-eight?
Forty-eight.
As amended with a due pass recommendation. Actually, that wasn't as amended. Board Bill forty-eight with a due pass recommendation.
Board Bill forty-eight. We have a motion before us for Board Bill forty-eight. I entertain a second.
Second.
Second by the Alderman from the fourth. It's been moved to second. Yeah, so Alderman, please proceed. Oh, I'm sorry. Please proceed.
Yes, sir. Once again, this is a simple pay bill. Um, these bills will be coming back to back for the next few bills that we're going to read. These are just, once again, making sure our county offices and the offices where um we have city workers, folks that are working on the better half of the city or once again compensating evenly across the board. I do understand there may be a little bit of controversy contingent upon which offices may be able to receive what, but the intent is one hundred percent across the board to give every department the exact same uh three percent raise and the two thousand dollar pay bonus. Um, so that is, once again, the 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 intent of this board bill, just like the one that preceded this.
All right. Thank you, sir. Alderman for the twenty-third, you're recognized.
Yeah, if if you could, as you come up with these can uh Alderman Bosley, if you could, please let me know what department these are, since I don't hit, since because if you just go by the number, some of us will have conflicts, some of us won't.
Understood. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you give me exactly which department this is? Under the something like the first line, right? And I am with you. Sometimes the the numbers definitely.
I'm sorry. I have to actually look in a board bill. Give me just a second.
My apologies.
It it would be helpful if we know what.
So I believe forty forty-eight is the um recorder deeds.
Yeah, because thirty thirty-nine as amended was the collector revenues office.
Right. I couldn't do that. I can't do the recorder, but I I just want to make sure. I I believe it was uh three of them that I whatever.
Oh, you know what? This is the citywide pay bill.
Forty-eight classified service. It's a civil service.
Yeah, this is citywide.
So that be uh uh issues. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I see no hands. Alderman from the third, you're recognized to close.
I believe I made an incorrect motion. I just I want to make sure we make the right one.
Your motion is your motion was to adopt. It was second. And so we were we're moving to adopt it. We will vote once you uh close on this.
Okay, just want to make sure so the adoption and third read and finally pass is the same motion. Just once, okay, thank you, sir. Um, so, yeah, with that, uh, once again, uh, this is a civil service pay bill, uh, one for the blankage uh the entire city and uh uh with that, I renew my motion.
Thank you very much. The move and second, we third read and finally pass board bill forty-eight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Middlebrook.
Hi.
Alderman Bosley.
Hi.
Alderman Evans.
Hi.
Alderman Page.
Hi.
Alderman Ingracia.
Hi.
Alderman Colder.
Hi.
Alderman Rice.
Hi.
Alderman Gunther.
Hi.
Alderman Stevens.
Hi.
Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard.
Pass.
I'm sorry. You said pass?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Green.
Hi.
Alderman Odenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Peel.
Hi.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Hello, uh, I was muted. No.
Thank you. Alderman Davis.
Hi.
Alderman Spencer.
Hi.
I'm sorry. Alderman was that I?
Hi.
Thank you. Alderman McCarroll.
Abstained.
Alderman Orion.
Hi.
Alderman Kong.
Hi.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Hi.
Alderman Boyd.
Abstained.
Alderman Grass.
Hi.
President Ballmer.
Hi.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard.
Present.
Nineteen I votes, one no vote, two abstained, and one voted present.
Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the third and third read and finally pass board bill forty-eight.
Board Bill forty-two as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the um appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the recorder's office pursuant to section eight two point six one zero of the revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one one seven four allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and contain an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Alderman from the third, you're recognized on third reading, final passage of board bill forty-two as amended.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass board bill forty-two. Let's make.
Okay. It's been moved by the Alderman from the third. I'll entertain a second.
Seconds.
We have a second. Was that the Alderman from the fourth?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please proceed, Alderman.
All right. Thank you. Once again, this board the this bill mirrors the other ones. This is one that I will have to also abstain from as my mother works for the recorder deeds office, but believe there's no problem with me uh speaking about it as I've also said that there is a potential conflict that will, once again, abstain from voting. But this is the same bill that mirrors the other bills that we just spoke about, which is giving the employees in that office the ability to have a three percent raise and a two thousand dollar bonus um with the in line with the rest of the different employment offices here that we have working out of City Hall uh doing the work for the city of St. Louis.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing no hands. Alderman from the third, you're recognized to close.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
Okay. We will, we have been moved by the Alderman third, second by the Alderman from the fourth. We third read and finally pass and Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Middlebrook.
Hi.
Alderman Bosley.
Abstained.
Alderman Evans.
Hi.
Alderman Page.
Hi.
Alderman Ingracia.
Hi.
Alderman Colder.
Hi.
Alderman Rice.
Hi.
Alderman Gunther.
Hi.
Alderman Stevens.
Hi.
Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard.
Hi.
Alderman Green.
Hi.
Alderman Odenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Peel.
Hi.
Alderman Todd.
Hello.
Alderman Davis.
Hi.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman McCarroll.
Hi.
Alderman Orion.
Hi.
Alderman Kong.
Hi.
Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Hi.
Alderman Grass.
Hi.
President Ballmer.
Hi.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Spencer. Twenty I votes, one no vote, and one abstained.
All right. By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderman from the third. And you third read and finally passed board bill forty-two as amended.
Board Bill fifty as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance to repeal ordinance number six eight seven zero six related to the appointment of to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees of the license collector of the city of St. Louis and enacting an in lieu thereof a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Alderman from the third, you're recognized on third reading, final passage of board bill fifty as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass board bill fifty as amended.
I entertain a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman the third, second by the Alderman from the fourth. And we find pass board bill fifty as amended. Any discussion? Seeing no hands up, but I'm sorry, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized. Please proceed. Please unmute yourself.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. It's uh what department is that? I'm sorry.
Uh, it's the license collector.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands. Alderman from the third, you're recognized to close.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is a regular pay bill for those who don't know exactly what it is. It's uh the pay bill for the license collector's office that mirrors this exact uh few pay bills that we just did, two thousand dollar for a bonus for that office and also a three percent raise. Uh, with that, I renew my motion.
All right. It's been moved to second. We third read and finally pass board bill fifty as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Sias. Alderman Middlebrook.
Hi.
Alderman Bosley.
Hi.
Alderman Evans.
Hi.
Alderman Page.
Hi.
Alderman Ingracia.
Hi.
Alderman Colder.
Hi.
Alderman Rice.
Hi.
Alderman Gunther.
Hi.
Alderman Stevens.
Hi.
Alderman Schweitzer. Alderman Howard.
Hi.
Alderman Green.
Hi.
Alderman Odenberg.
Hi.
Woman Peel.
Hi.
Alderman Todd.
Hello.
Alderman Davis.
Hi.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman McCarroll.
Hi.
Alderman Orion.
Hi.
Alderman Kong.
Hi.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Hi.
Alderman Boyd.
Hi.
Alderman Grass.
Hi.
President Ballmer.
Hi.
Alder Alderwoman Sias. Alderwoman Schweitzer. Alderwoman Spencer.
Mr. President.
Uh, Sharita, one second. I could Alderman from fourteen, you have your hand up.
That was board bill fifty as amended. Is that correct?
Uh, the one we're doing currently is.
That we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I I need to change mine to my vote to uh abstained.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
Thank you.
So that is twenty I votes, one no vote, and one abstained.
All right. Thank you. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the third. And we third read and finally pass board bill five zero fifty as amended.
Board Bill forty as amended sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance amending ordinance number seven zero seven one four by amending section one, repealing section two of that ordinance and enacting in lieu thereof a new section two pertaining to the same subject matters and amending section three, amending the pay metrics containing an emergency clause. The prevent the provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Sharita. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-sixth ward, you're recognized on third reading and final passage of board bill forty as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move um would like to make the motion to uh
Adopt.
Uh, board bill forty as amended. And just for clarity. Uh, Board Bill forty as amended, and just for clarity, this is for the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, we have a motion. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-sixth, second by the Alderman from the fourth, with third reading finally pass Board Bill forty as amended. Any discussion? Alderman Todd, you have your hand up. Please proceed.
What is, uh, Board Bill forty? Is it a raise for, for the employees?
Uh, well, if you, why don't we, we're going to go through that currently right now. Please let Alderman twenty-six discuss it, and you know, we'll have the answer. Alderman, please.
Okay, uh.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. You're going to describe the board bill now, sir.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. It's for a well-deserved raise for the sheriffs of the city of St. Louis and a two thousand dollar bonus. Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, I oppose any raise for any, uh, across the board raise for any employees, and then all elected officials and employees should be, uh, speaking on behalf of our constituents who pay taxes, uh, as well as the people who are campaigning and asking for the citizens to vote for them. They should be up in arms about all this trash in the eighteen ward, all this tall grass, and, uh, all, and no activities for, for our kids and adults and seniors, uh, and, uh, also our drug addicts who, uh, whether it's alcohol or illegal drugs, uh, and we don't have any money, enough money left for treatment. So they should be, uh, so I'm opposed to any across the board raise. I think any bonus should be, the person should come up and be able to justify every bonus that a person gets. So thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, madam, uh, president, and thank you for the all the people.
All right. Thank you very much. Alderman from the nineteenth, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really needed to clarify a few things. The budget that we passed for the city of St. Louis had a lot of scrutiny and conversation and consideration for our citizens of St. Louis. The Health Department added twenty-one employees so that we could deal with behavioral health problems, work better with the Police Department, uh, with increased staff to work with them, also increase staff to help with the homeless on the street, and to also find additional resources for them to be housed. We also increased the budget for the Building Division for demolition. That is something that is of a high priority for the city of St. Louis. We also increased the budget where we were talking about uh, the parks and also talking about how we were going to provide more recreation as most of you all have paid attention to and saw the flyers and everything, uh, including the recreation centers, saying those public schools and other facilities are providing summer programming for our children and also, uh, adult education classes for our other citizens, especially seniors. Those things will also be increased even more as we move through the next fiscal year. We also had a very serious conversation. We can no longer wait for employees to show up. That is not an excuse that we can use anymore. So there's a very, uh, purposeful effort to make sure that we find a way by hiring other entities to get our grass cut and do some other things on behalf of the city. This city of St. Louis and those who discussed the budget, those department heads, they were very serious and they understood that we are too, and we do care about the citizens of the city of St. Louis, and we are going to get it right. We know that we have to do better and we will. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Allen. And we have, uh, from the twelfth, Alderman Stevens, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, to respond to the Alderman of the eighteenth's comments with your approval.
Uh, it's your, you're recognized at this moment, sir, so please proceed.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to state for the record that nobody works in the civil service, just as nobody works in public libraries or public art museums or in the public sector for the salary, right? But we still have a duty to our citizens to pay, especially our civil servants, to pay them fairly, and I totally agree with the Alderman of the eighteenth. I have had many frustrations with commissioners, with directors, with the people at the top that we deal with directly as we are expected to do in this role as aldermen and alderwomen. But this bill and these preceding bills are for the people who are out there doing the mowing, are out there doing the tree trimming, filling the potholes, not the individuals that are telling them to do it. Uh, you know, so I, I want to refocus the conversation, especially with the Alderman of the eighteenth, whom I very deeply respect, whom I'm so glad to be roommates with at City Hall. And just remind everyone that this is about the people who, when we have an excessive heat warning and it is a hundred and four degrees with a high dew point average, are the ones out there pouring hot asphalt, are the ones out there trimming trees and so on and so forth. And with this particular bill, the sheriffs being all over the city at all hours of the day, and I, I just, as someone who comes from public libraries and public service, it is frustrating to have these, these conversations and these rhetoric, or this rhetoric that people don't deserve to be paid for their work. And I, I appreciate, President Ballmer, you allowing me to, to state that for the record. Again, nobody comes to the civil service for the salary. It is a call to service. It is hard work and it deserves, and they deserve, our citizens, our neighbors deserve to be paid fairly, and if not, what they, if we can't afford to do what they absolutely deserve, they do afford this bump up. So I fully support these bills and I appreciate the time. I yield back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Alderman from the eighteenth, you have your hand raised once again.
Uh, Mr. Ald- Mr. President, may I, may I, I ask the Alderman, may I both ask a question and make a statement?
Who are you asking the question from of?
I'd like to, uh, ask the, uh, Alderman from the twelve ward, my roommate.
Okay, one second, please. Alderman from the twelfth, will you yield to a question from the Alderman from the eighteen?
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, President Ballmer.
All right, Alderman from the eighteenth, please proceed.
Now, Mr. Alderman from the twelve ward, how, how tall is the grass in your ward? How many, I'm thinking, how many they are? Do, are you from south, uh, north of Delmar, south of Delmar?
Alderman, which question would you like me to answer first?
First, I'd like to know, how to, uh, what side of the city do you live on, north or south of Delmar?
Alderman, I'm not looking to pick a fight and I'm not looking to, to dive into a very real issue in the city. Uh, I'm very, very forthwith in my belief that we have this strong separation between North St. Louis and South St. Louis. I do believe it was intentional, uh, not just with previous administrations, but in the previous decades. And I fully recognize that as the southernmost alderman, I have a very privileged ward. I have a ward that is almost exclusively residential and one that has one of the highest population densities in the city. So I'm very well aware that I am a South City Alderman, and I'm not seeking to tell any North City Alderman or Alderwoman how to run their wards. In response to your second question regarding vacant properties and high, uh, grass and LRA, so on and so forth, that is also an issue down here. We also have unique issues, uh, geographically.
Point of order. Where's your point of order, please?
Houses, uh, germane to the, to the Board Bill.
Well, we, we're.
I mean, we're talking now about grass and everything else.
We are a little off topic. We should be in regard, all remarks should be germane to the situation, which is actually the pay raise itself.
I was merely responding to.
No, I understand. I'm directing that to Alderman the eighteenth with his questioning. So Alderman from the eighteenth, any questions should be in regard to the, a dollar amount being given as a bonus or the dollar amount being given as a raise and only to that, not to civil, to, uh, work production, but to the dollar amount. That is what we're discussing, dollar amounts only.
Thank you. Uh, I hope this is on, on the germane is, which is, uh, the dollar amount, uh, uh, out there are workers, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, black workers and other workers who may not, who would be glad if they could pass, some of them may not be able to pass the civil service exam, but they certainly could do the, just most of the job that are available, so.
Okay, sir.
Uh, also, the other thing, just then on the topic of, uh, our taxes are limited, so we would probably like to play, pay everybody the same top dollar, but we can't. So the main one, uh, is, is that, uh, that with the dollar amount, I just haven't seen where, uh, on any job that I've ever worked on, I've seen where all, all employees deserve a bonus and the services that, uh, my constituents are getting in North St., in North St. Louis, part of what that I represent.
Okay. Your remarks have been well noted, sir, throughout, through all of these. Uh, I might, I might, if you could indulge me for a second, it might be better, behoove you better in the future to take this up at the committee hearing, uh, for, for this, uh, and bring it up at that point. Uh, if, we are aware that we, you know, of, on each of these bills, you've made that, made that known. Uh, we appreciate that and we respect that, but if there's anything further in regard to the dollar amounts here?
No, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President, and thank you, Alderman from the twelve one. Thank you for the all the people, uh, for your precious stand.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing no hands. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you are, uh, recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I renew my motion to third, uh, read and finally pass this well-deserved raise for the sheriffs of the city of St. Louis.
All right. By your vote, oh, okay, it's been moved to second. We will now, uh, that we do, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Pardon my confusion here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye. Alderwoman Carter. Alderwoman.
Uh-oh.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Oh.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Switzer. Twenty-two I votes and one no vote.
All right. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth ward and third read and finally pass Board Bill forty as amended. Uh, before we proceed, I've received a text from the Alderwoman from the first. She's having connection problems. I don't know if STLTV or someone can reach out to her. Uh, so if, uh, that's possible. Thank you very much. Sharita, please proceed.
Board Bill nineteen, sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section ninety-four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri pursuant to ordinance number six, three, one, six, eight, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the, the treasurer of the city of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account One appropriating eleven million, one hundred and seven thousand dollars from the said sales tax for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to the Bay State Development Agency for certain purposes and contain the severability and an emergency clause.
All right. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I asked for adoption of Board Bill number nineteen. Um, that is a transit finance bill. We're moving the funds that have received.
I need to entertain a second, man.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been moved by the Alderman from the nineteenth, been seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth. Uh, please proceed with your, uh, discussion. Alderwoman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, as we move forward, this funds are managed and, uh, through a trust fund, and this is a finance bill just to move it to the appropriate place, uh, so that the Bay State, um, operations will continue.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
Yes, I, I have, even on all the ones I've abstained, and I've sent them the proper paperwork, but the three Bay State bills, because you have enough you that works for Bay State, I have not stayed on, just.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is the record.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands up. Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized to close.
Uh, thank you. I renew my motion.
All right. It's been moved in second. We third read and finally pass Board Bill nineteen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye. No, I, I'm sorry. I abstain. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Switzer. Twenty-two I votes and one abstain.
Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the nineteenth ward and third read and finally pass Board Bill number nineteen.
Board Bill twenty, sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax and pool, and I'm sorry, pursuant to section nine, four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri pursuant to ordinance number six, four, one, 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 creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the city of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account Two appropriating eleven million, one hundred and seven thousand dollars from the said sales tax for the period of July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to the Bay State Development Agency for certain purposes and contain the severability and an emergency clause.
All right. Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt Board Bill number twenty.
Second.
Second by the Alderwoman from the fourth. We have a motion and second. Alderwoman, please proceed.
Uh, this Board Bill number twenty is the second trust fund that is put in place for operations by Metro. Uh, there's nothing any different than we do every year in order to have those funds in the appropriate place that are managed by the Treasurers Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see no hands. With that, Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. It's been moved in second. We third read and finally pass Board Bill number twenty.
Request for previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection. We have third read and finally pass Board Bill twenty.
Board Bill twenty-one, sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis and President Ballmer, an ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty-one million, two hundred and nine thousand dollars as described in section nine, four point six, zero, zero through nine, four point six, five. Six-zero-zero through nine-four-point-six-five-five revised statutes of Missouri two thousand as amended for the period of July first, twenty-twenty-two. Through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, which sum is hereby appropriated at the Transportation Trust Fund to the by-state development agency. For transportation purposes and contain the severability and an emergency clause.
All right, all of them from the nineteenth, you're recognized on Board Bill twenty-one.
Board Bill twenty-one recognizes the previous two board bills and uh, I.
Please make a motion.
I move that we adopt the Board Bill twenty-one.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, moved by the all woman from the nineteenth, second by the all woman from the twenty-fifth. All women, please proceed.
Uh, I I ask for favorable consideration uh, for the finance bill for Metro. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing no hands raised, all room from the nineteenth, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
All right.
Request.
Been moved the second. We third read and finally pass.
Previous role.
Madam Clerk, we have a request for previous role. Hearing no objections. By your vote, you sustain the motion of the all of them from the nineteenth, third read and finally pass Board Bill twenty-one.
Board Bill sixteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Evans, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. For the forty-one-hundred through forty-one thirty-four back to Martin Luther King Drive area.
All right, all the one from the fourth, you are recognized.
I move that we um.
Adopt?
Adopt uh, Board Bill sixteen.
Okay, I we have a motion before us. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the all woman from the fourth, second by the all woman from the twenty-fifth. All of them from the fourth, please proceed with your discussion.
Ye- yes, uh, uh, Board Board Bill sixteen is um. Development in the fourth ward in the forty-one-hundred uh, blocks of. Of um. Martin Luther King. And I. Would like to have this pass. I hope I'm saying this right.
You're doing, you're doing fine. Yeah, that that if if you're asking for that, we do have some hands raised. Uh, we can proceed with further discussion. All right, all the one from the seventeenth, you were first. Please proceed.
You said seventeenth, that's the nineteenth.
No, no, all the one from seventeen, she had her hand up first. All one Peel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Um, I just wanted to make a a comment regarding my request to move the development projects. Uh, to the uh, from the consent calendar to uh, the uh, third reading calendar. I feel that these redevelopment projects with a baitment request, you know, they really impact the city. And and you know, the schools and the taxing districts, and they deserve to be voted on individually. You know, especially in light of the situation that we've had with the indictments. And so I feel that to, you know. In terms of the constituents, I feel that as we uh, vote on these individually, uh, the constituents deserve transparency and accountability. And I believe uh, it will help in the restoration of their trust in us to be uh, honest and effective leaders. Uh, and as I mentioned, we're, you know, all guilty, I feel myself too, in terms of these two projects that have passed. And I think that. Through having it on uh, the regular calendar, we're able to ask basic questions that I feel that we owe to the constituents. Uh, and so they would know if we. Voted yes, no, present or abstained. Uh, and so I just does, I don't feel like it benefits anyone. Uh, if it's not, if it's, if it's uh, on the consent calendar. I think that this is the least we can do to for the public and uh, I uh, would love to. Make sure that in the future, when we look at these projects that are uh, using the taxpayers' money affecting the taxing districts that we. Put these projects um, on the regular calendar. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Well, the one from the nineteenth, you are next.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to speak about this development project. This is a a black-owned business that is currently in the nineteenth ward, started with pennies. Started uh, with nothing, built that business for the last ten years. And they're now in a position after struggling and looking at opportunities and saving their money. To build a new facility in the city of St. Louis. They have chosen the Ville area. They purchased their land over a period of time from LRA and private owners. They also um. Have been vetted through banks, so they've gotten their loan. Uh, SLDC has taken time to help them because again, this is a family-owned business, minority-owned business, black woman. And I am very proud of them uh, to see them grow and to uh, finally get to this point. Uh, so uh, it's a million and what is it, a million three project? So um, helping them with this is the right thing to do. And I think that it also will help them as they continue to grow. Because they want to expand that business. They've already bought the additional land. And as they grow, they're going to expand it. So um, I thank you and again, uh. Alderwoman Evans, I'm very happy for this business and sorry to see it leave the nineteenth, but um. Uh, they deserve it as a family. They work hard. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Alderwoman.
All right, look, um, all the one from the fourth, so we still have a uh, all the one from the twenty-sixth, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I really can just say ditto to what Alderwoman Davis just said. I wanted to just make sure I rise and am able to. Yell aye on this vote. And Alderwoman Evans, you did an amazing job. You're doing a good job. You're doing the work as well as all of us. There's no. Broad brush painted on the commitment that we all have in service to our communities. Thank you. For holding the line and for this business, bringing this business back um, to where she chose to be. Again, either choices. So Alderwoman Evans, you did a good job. And again, I can't wait to yell aye on this uh, development.
All right, thank you. All the one from the fourteenth, you have your hand up.
Yes, I rise in favor of this board bill. Uh, also, having been on the Neighborhood Development Committee and and seeing the presentation, anytime we can encourage minority. Women-owned businesses to remain in the city. I I think it's uh, imperative as our du- and our duty as older people. Uh, it's easy to throw stones when um, your your ward is is facing, you know, a a upswing in development and all the. Uh. Things have been laid ahead of you uh, for abatements and development, but many wards are still struggling. And I think we need to keep in mind how we need to encourage development in those lesser uh, popular wards. And encourage businesses to stay and remain and serve our community uh, as we move forward. Um, looking at the the downside uh, is not the way we move forward. We need to rise above and help those people that wish to remain in the city. And develop the business and serve our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the fifteenth, you have your hand raised. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I uh, do also want to speak in favor of the project. I, you know, I I do think. That um, this is an appropriate use of tax incentives. And I also think that this conversation that we're having today is very important. Um, I don't think when, you know, the older woman from the seventeenth asked us to have this discussion, it was intended to be throwing stones at anyone. Um, I think rather it was to encourage us as a body to be more deliberative in our decision-making, um, because the public deserves that from us. And so I appreciate her taking these um, you know, off of the agenda, giving us the opportunity to all learn more about these projects, have a good discussion. Um, about the use of taxes in our ci- our city. Um, you know, for me, this is a good use uh, of incentives and I. I think that um, you know, a lot of folks in our city would agree. We want to be incentivizing and encouraging uh, you know, development in neighborhoods that have long been neglected. Uh, and we have, you know, we have other challenges in other areas of the city, you know, the the area that I represent is quickly becoming very unaffordable. And so um, there's, there's challenges in what we need to do um, to advise different types of developments to uh, to promote more afford. Uh, all of that is to say, I I, you know, think this is a good discussion. I appreciate the older woman from the fourth and from the nineteenth in uh, in the twenty-sixth from for sharing. Um, the great this project. I think we do want to incentivize um, businesses like this and I I hope that we can have more discussions. About this going forward. Uh, it only helps us, I think, as a body uh, to become more deliberative and intentional uh, and and brings transparency, I think, to the public. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Alderwoman. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you're recognized. Please unmute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the board. Uh, ditto everything. I I don't really have, I mean, I'm in favor of the uh, the project and everything, but. I also appreciate the opportunity to ask questions because while we're sitting here, I just Googled the address. And it looks like the address is forty-one-hundred to forty-one thirty-four Martin Luther King, and that looks like it's like half of a strip mall. And then there's an empty lot right next to it. So I guess uh, if the the older woman from the fourth would yield to questions, I I'm just kind of a little curious. Are we, are we taking part of the strip mall down?
Okay, one second, one second. All the one from the fourth, we yield to a question from the Alderman twenty-eight.
Yes, yes, uh, Chair, I I knew.
Alderman twenty-eight, please proceed.
Uh, yes, all the one for the board. I'm just curious. I I I think it sounds great and I appreciate all the other comments hearing about the business. That's fun, too. Um, that's a nice little bonus, but just, just. For my own curiosity, where is this project going? Is it going in that lot or is it going in the strip mall or what?
It's going on to the lot. And uh, as uh. Alderwoman Davis said that uh, the owner has purchased the land that's next to the strip lot. And she's uh, the owner is planning on building and sorryly, sorrowfully to say, she's moving her business. To the fourth ward from uh, the nineteenth ward.
So it'd be kind of built on to the that strip mall, looks like.
It's not going to be built on, it's going to be built next to.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, no further questions. Thank you. Uh, all from the seventeenth, you have your hand up again. I see no one in front of you, so you have spoken once before. You you allowed to proceed. Please go.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, I just want to make the comment, I am for development in the city. Uh, you know, development allows for cities to economically thrive and strengthen. And at the same time, I want that the tax incentives to be used appropriately. We have seen that it hasn't been used appropriately. You know, just most recently and even in the seventeenth ward. So I am bringing this up because again, I feel that we individually, if we need to ask questions. We can ask questions through putting it on or taking it off of the consent calendar. I also want to mention that Nicole Galloway did an audit, uh, and I know that this is not the uh, the tax incentive that Nicole Galloway did an audit. She did an audit of our TIPS and it came back that we are not using them correctly. And also SLDC uh, paid for a group PFM to look at tax incentives. And uh, the use uh, just hasn't been uh, correct. And so we're just looking at these tax incentives, you know, a little bit better. And this current situation uh, has brought this to light. And again, I will say that. Um, as a planner myself, um, and as uh, with a degree in architecture, you know, I want to strengthen cities. Um, and again. Uh, this situation just brings to light um, that, you know, we should be able to um, ask the questions and I'm also glad of all the people who spoke up. Twenty-sixth ward, uh, the fourth board, et cetera, regarding this particular project. Uh, and I am in support of it. I just wanted to give uh, Alder and myself the opportunity to um, ask questions. So, thank you.
Raise, please proceed. All right, Oliver from the sixteenth, you have your hand up. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, will the older woman from the seventeenth please yield for some questions?
Uh, let's see, all of them from the seventeenth, will you hear the questions from the all of them from the sixteen?
Yes, I will.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderwoman, you mentioned um, a report that Nicole Galloway did regarding tax increment financing. And that the city was not using it appropriately. Can you offer more detail to that? That sort of um, strikes a serious accusation that we may need to look into further at SLDC um, and elsewhere if if we're. Not using TIF correctly. So I I would love a little more uh, detail on that, please.
Yeah, regarding uh, that Nicole Galloway report, uh, uh, it mentioned that uh, some of these tax incentives that we're providing to developers. Um, are not um, allowing, are not as effective uh, as uh. As they should be and that we're not doing due diligence in terms of reporting and transparency. Uh, Alderwoman, Alderman from the sixteen, um, I do not have the report in front of me, but I would, uh, I will uh, provide you that report. Regarding uh, the comments and the uh, information that Nicole Galloway uh, had in that particular report. So. Uh, that is the information I can provide you.
Sure, that that's helpful. Um, Alderman, just a couple more questions. Um. Uh, these incentive uh, projects were also on the perfection consent calendar just just forty-eight hours ago. Um, and we all consented to that. I'm just curious with what in the last forty-eight hours maybe changed that that. You think we need to uh, have a discussion around on each project um, based on, because it it would make sense that. You know, when they were on the perfection consent calendar, to move them to the regular perfection calendar. Because a robust conversation could then even allow for amendments. That's the opportunity to change it. Um, it's a little late to the game to to want to just have a conversation when we're third reading and finally passing without an opportunity really. To change the bill. So I'm just just curious to the the rationalization behind that.
Uh, Alderman uh, from the sixteen, I uh, agree with you. Uh, I did want to uh, speak up, uh, just, you know, less than forty-eight hours. I did not have that opportunity. To get to my microphone and I understand that, you know, we could make more, uh, we can make amendments. Uh, and I felt that uh, I should speak up now because there was an opportunity, but I do believe that we should speak up uh, during the second reading and I feel that that's when uh. This should be taken off the consent, uh, you know, second reading consent calendar and then put uh, onto the regular calendar. So. Uh, that is the reason why I I spoke up now, uh, because I was able to have that opportunity to do so.
Great, okay. I have no further questions. Uh, thank you, Alderwoman. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the both of you. Uh, we have uh, once again, all the woman from the twenty-sixth, twice that you have spoken once before, all the one twenty-sixth will. Take all of them void from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a comment because I know the atmosphere that we are in as a board of Alderman, that everybody is kind of. Uh, looking over their shoulders and trying to make sure that all their eyes are dotted and Ts across. And so I just feel as an elected official, now my character is at question. And so I try my best to make sure that my constituents are constantly in conversation and know what's going on. And I'm pretty sure a lot of people do that. So I keep hearing this word transparency and people need to know. So I keep hearing this word transparency and people need to know. Well, I don't know if the alderwoman from the 17th, since she walked into a gold mine, because I didn't have that luxury. But I don't know if you know that the TIF dollars and the tax dollar debatement was created for our wards? Because we were the ones that didn't have the opportunity to get those dollars to bring developers into our communities. But your ward, you got all of it. And so you're the one that's saying that we need to be more transparent. So all I'm asking is allow us to get what we need in our communities, because we're already behind. I keep telling you all that. We 20 years behind benefiting from these, from these projects so we can make sure that we can build our wards up. It's not a debate, it's not a back and forth, it's just reality. You know, we cannot get developers to come into our communities because we don't have the incentives to offer them what you all have. And so a lot of you at this board have walked into areas that have already been developed, already have our incentives. You have stripped the city of everything and now you say, oh, we need to be transparent. We need to look at what's going on. The community needs to know. Well, I can speak for me, my community is well aware. Because we have enough committees that are community driven, that people know what's going on. And so it just hurts me because it's like you pride yourself on integrity to try to make sure you send a positive message in your community. And then we have people that say, we not transparent. So I just, I, I'm just really appalled because it just seemed like we can't never get ahead. People that did whatever they did, that's them, but I can't account for them. I have to account for me and my community. And I'm sorry, Mr. President, but that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman from the 26th, you're recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. President and members of the board. I just, I was going to say something, but I'm taking that back. What I do want to make sure we know, because I am getting some calls just because of some of the created confusion that we're going through down here. There are more eyes on us and people want to know what this development is because we keep saying developer and they see how excited some of us are about it. So I wanted to give this opportunity to Alderwoman Evans to speak on who this development is for. And I also want to make a comment that we are all responsible and capable legislators down here. And you cannot legislate off of social media. You cannot legislate off of Twitter. You have to be responsible for your own actions down here. So with that being said, with Alderwoman Evans yield for one good question.
All right, Alderman from the fourth, will you yield questions from the Alderwoman from the 26th?
Yes, I will.
All right, Alderwoman, please proceed.
Alderwoman Evans, who is the developer for this project?
The developer for this project, for this project is Mrs. Ozella Foster. And it's for her brand new funeral home that she chose the fourth ward to house this facility in. And I welcome the development into the fourth ward, which has been a long time coming for any type of development. And thank you, Alderwoman. I hope I answered your question.
You absolutely did, thank you.
All right, any further questions? No, okay. With that, we'll recognize, once again, Alderwoman from the 17th, you have your hand up, please proceed.
Thank you. I would just like to add that I have been saying regarding these TIPS and tax incentives that there is an appropriate time to use them and then they can be abused. And when I first moved into the 17th ward in 2014 and when I bought my house, there were no comp. They had to go to Sular, they had to go to Compton Heights, they had to go to Central West End because there were no comparables. And I did not get a tax incentive to rehab my house. However, at a point in time in the 17th ward, it was a place that needed some tax incentives. And when I moved in here, the vacancy rate was probably 80% on the commercial quarter in the Grove on Manchester. And I believe at this point in time, and I'm just saying that, we need to use different tools and processes in Midtown and in the 17th ward in how we look at tax incentives. I would love, you know, these TIPS and tax incentives are available to the whole city. And I would love to have these tax incentives and TIPS to be It isn't a disgrace. I would love to have these TIPS and tax incentives to be put into the north side. I want them to be put into the north side. I don't want all the development and all these incentives to be put here. I want the developers to be wanted, I want the developers to develop and take bigger risks in the north side. These tax, tax incentives. These tax incentives that have been given to the 17th ward for the past 20 plus years, as I mentioned, were needed at a point in time. And I have made it my mission over last year to be very diligent. Yeah, it is upsetting to me. It is really upsetting to me regarding this city. And I'm trying to bridge the divides. And so I want to go back to this was really happening with the previous alder. And I am trying to do something different. It's not perfect what I'm doing. And I said earlier, I blame myself also for not scrutinizing some of these tax incentives prior. I am bringing up this conversation, not because I think the alderwoman from the fourth hasn't looked at the tax incentives for this particular project incorrectly. I'm bringing this conversation to the forefront because it needs to be brought. And this indictment just has elevated the level of and I will continue to look at the tax incentives in the 17th ward with a lot of scrutiny. And I have brought in and I get help in with individuals looking at the workbooks and the numbers. And I am also upset on just how hard, you know, I want, like I said, I got like eight developments going. And I wish they were in all the other wards. Because that's how we are going to make this city whole. We are not going to make this city whole by putting everything in one area. Yes, I just want to end, I'm trying. I'm trying my best.
We, we've gotten a little off topic here, Alderwoman. We're, we should be regarding the board bill and we appreciate everything. We are, we are all going through a very tough time here with what's occurred down at the board.
And I just wanted to make my point on
We appreciate your point, we appreciate your, your care. All right, Alderman from the third, you have your hand up, please. All comments must be directed towards Board Bill 16. We've gotten a little off topic here. I've kind of let it go a little because this is a very, very, very different time for all of us. But if we can, let's keep on topic. Alderman from the third, you're recognized as to Board Bill 16.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. I believe this is most certainly germane to it because this is germane to tax abatement in general. I won't dig into the weeds on what we most certainly got off on, but there is most certainly some pieces of this that needs to be addressed in terms and regards to the tax abatement within the city in general, not the morale of the individuals that themselves are providing the information for these tax abatements or the people who are running these tax abatement bills in general. We are merely representatives of what this system has given and provided, potentially as a development tool for us to redevelop a city that has for years had people moving out of it like 40 gone west. So for a very, very long time, north side, south side, all these different factions had many, many problems. People were leaving the city, no matter whether you was white or black, no matter what side of town that you lived on. Folks did what they needed to do to ensure that the city could stay viable and we had a tax base. So that tax base also needed some type of an incentive for money to stay here. So we're now at this point in time where the city has done what's necessary to put itself in a place where it can be having all these great headlines, being one of the best cities for new startups, being a good city where you have low tax rates and you can have a, a, a pretty large house. You know, we have affordable housing here. We, you know, and I, and I'm not going to say nothing bad about Alderman Rhodey or anybody like that. I think, how many people twisted? I think he did a hell of a job. The man used them tax incentives to, to, to build up one of the parts of the city that has development, I mean, out the wazoo right now. Had it not been for all of that tax abatement and all those different incentives, we wouldn't have that side of town at least being looked at as a place to house all these different new inventions and all these different new renerecs that are coming out of the city aside from the homicide. We got Cortex, all the, it wouldn't be a Cortex if it wasn't for tax.
All right.
And, and you know,
Point of order, Mr. President.
I feel like it's germane.
Alderman from the 25th, please state your point of order.
You indicated that we should keep the comments relative to this specific board.
Another minute, yes. Alderman from the fourth, your point of order is noted, thank you. Alderman the third, any other discussion has to be about this address on Martin Luther King Drive, the business, anything pertinent to the incentive itself on this particular project. This discussion we're having is not germane to this board bill at this time. I understand what you're trying to say, but we are on Board Bill 16, the third reading finally passed this board bill.
Understood, well, I'm technically tying it in, I didn't get a chance to do that before the point of order came in.
Heard anything in regard to Board Bill 16?
I'm sorry?
Board Bill 16 is in the 14th and the fourth ward. If you could turn your, echo. We're not discussing the seventh ward or any of the ward. This is about the fourth ward only and about the address on Martin Luther King Drive. If you have a question, our comment only regard to this new funeral home being built, that's what we're discussing.
I'm going to have a comment about the tax abatement in general about the funeral home and the fourth ward.
Sir, sir, we, we're not here to be about tax abatement in general.
What's I'm talking about, the funeral home? I'm talking about in regards to the funeral home.
All comments, all comments first before to Board Bill 16 specifically.
That's okay, well, we, we definitely do it live. This has got super interesting. Okay, so with, with all of that being said, there is no reason why this person should be scrutinized to the point that they've been scrutinized on this part of town for a tax abatement for a funeral home. We getting shot at every single day. We got murders happening every single day in our communities. This is germane to this funeral home because the bodies that are dropping in our communities based on all the different incentives that has happening for the people that are dying in our communities because they do not have all the resources that were taken from all the different tax abatements that did happen on another part of town, they deserve this debatement. It deserves not to be scrutinized, scrutinized. There is a funeral home. We talking about bodies here, bodies that get dropped off in our communities. The thousands of people that die, all the thousands of dollars that come to our city, come here to help our folks, the ones who getting shot at every day. So we scrutinize a funeral home owned by a black person when the black bodies in these cities are the ones that's being dropped because of the lack of tax abatement and incentivations and everything that has happened in the past, keeping it germane to this funeral home. Stop making our people wait for resources. You can't blame a few for the problems of the many. And that's what we're sitting here saying, that the tax abatement here is going to be a problem for all the tax abatements that happened all in the past. This tax abatement ain't finna stop schools from getting incentives. This tax abatement ain't finna stop children from getting books. They not finna stop children from getting iPads or none of the other things that we're sitting here simply saying tax abatements need to be scrutinized on our side of town for. Our schools ain't being closed because of this tax abatement, not because of this funeral home. Our communities aren't being built up because this funeral home. Our people are not dying in this city because of this funeral approval. I'm not dying, we ain't dying in this city because of this funeral home. This business serves a purpose. And keeping it germane to this tax abatement bill for this funeral home, our people need to ensure that we own the places where we getting buried at. The bodies that are dropping every single day, the money that we spend on these bodies, it needs to go back to us and back to our community. And that's what this does. The same people that look like us are burying us and have the ability to grieve with us and put that money back in the community. When you can't afford a funeral, you gonna go to this funeral home and ask them, can they help? And some of the money maybe that we gave in, gave them through incentivize that they save through this incentivization can be what they utilize to help those individuals who can't help themselves. So with that, I renew my, I will not renew my notion, but I, I yield.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Two hands up, Alderman from the eighth, this is your first time speaking, I'll recognize you, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am grateful, Alderwoman from the fourth, for the opportunity to, to talk about the development because I, I agree, I think small business in your board is a great thing to be celebrating for us. And I think this is an absolutely appropriate use of the, of the tax abatement. I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the business. I'm grateful that the bill also includes the, the analysis by SLDC at the end of that. That hasn't always been the practice to attach that to the end of the bills, but this one has it. And so we can see exactly where the incentive is going to lead, where the money is going to come from and, and what we're, what, sort of as a financial picture, what the city is benefiting from. And so I'm grateful for that. And so I, I, I don't think that this was brought off the consent calendar to be controversial about your particular, about this particular incentive. I think if we're able to use this as an opportunity on, on bills to, to talk about why, why it's, it's such a good deal for the city, I think that's great. This is, this is an excellent example of an appropriate use here. And, you know, small businesses, locally owned, small businesses that are serving the community are, are more important than ever. And so I, I applaud you in this, in this tax incentive deal. And I, I do also appreciate the opportunity to talk about it. I think that goes, that, that helps the, the rest of the city learn about this important project in your board. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss it today.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the 17th, you have your hand up. All remarks, please pertinent to the address on Martin Luther King Drive, Board Bill 16 only. We are, we need to stay on topic, please. So any comments must be directed directly towards the fourth ward and this particular project. Please unmute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And also to Alderwoman from the fourth, I am in support of this project. I wanted to have a discussion regarding this project in terms of individuals having any questions. I see that people did have some questions, people learned a lot more about this project. And I, I, again, it wasn't to, and anyways, it is not to what I say. It's more to be able to ask the questions that people have. And I would like to have, you know, going forward, that we ask questions regarding all tax incentives. So I feel that Alderman from the fourth presented a great project and I'm glad that this is a black owned business, it's also a female owned business. I think that is a positive, too. And I, you know, I look forward to that this project gets built and also increases its, its ability to thrive in the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other hands up, we will be closing discussion. Alderwoman from the fourth, you are recognized to close on Board Bill 16.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I move that Board Bill sixteen pass.
Okay, that's sufficient, thank you very much. Okay, has been moved in second. Hold on, hold on. Has been moved, that we third reading finally passed Board Bill sixteen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
I'm sorry, I for Middlebrook.
Thank you. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer, I'm sorry, Alderman, Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Teal.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman McQuarrel. Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Tom.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boy.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman McQuarrel.
Aye.
Twenty-three, I votes.
Thank you, Sharina, by your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the fourth ward, and we third read and finally pass Board Bill sixteen.
Board Bill twenty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated March twenty-second. Twenty-two for the forty-seven forty-seven Atkins Avenue and four zero zero nine Delores Street area.
All right, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on third reading and final passage of Board Bill twenty-three.
Yes, I would like Board Bill twenty-three, which is approving a redevelopment plan for the forty-seven forty-seven address Atkins Avenue.
Please make a motion.
I'd like, I make a motion to put this before the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, we have a motion, entertain a second.
Pass it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been, we have a motion by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth, the second by the Alderwoman from the fourth. That we. Third reading finally pass Board Bill twenty-three, okay, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
Yes, this redevelopment plan is for two properties, infill properties in the fourteen for the Bevo area. Which is a somewhat struggling area to maintain population, these will be two market rate houses. Two bedroom, two bath at, and infill for two houses that burned and were. Ultimately demolished. The housing, the acquisition cost was from LRA, it was five thousand dollars, there's two separate lots, two separate parcels. Each house will be two bedroom, two bath, fourteen hundred square feet. I will yield for questions if anyone.
Okay. We open up for discussion, I have a hand raised, Alderwoman from the fifteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, would the Alderwoman from the fourteenth yield?
Yes, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, will you yield to questions, the Alderwoman from the fifteen?
Yes.
All right, Alderwoman from the fifteenth, please proceed.
Great, just two very quick questions, one, you said their market rate, do you know what the developer is considering as market rate as their price point?
They will be approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each.
Okay, and what is the the terms of the abatement, how much and for how many years?
The terms of the abatement are, the total cost is forty-seven thousand for both properties. And it's ninety percent for ten years.
All right, thank you so much.
Eighty-nine development.
Okay, thank you very much, and do you happen to know who the developer is?
Yes, I do, his name is Joe Langill, he's a hometown boy here from the Bevo.
Okay, great, thanks, no further questions.
All right, thank you very much, I see no other hands raised, so Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you are recognized to close on Board Bill twenty-three.
Yes, I would like the board's favorable consideration of Board Bill twenty-three to finally pass and move into law, Board Bill twenty-three.
All right, it's been moved in second, we third read and finally pass Board Bill twenty-three, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Request for previous roll.
There's been a request for previous roll. During no objection, by your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderwoman from the fourteenth ward, third read and finally pass Board Bill twenty-three. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five. Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six, forty-three, forty-one as amended, forty-nine as amended, fifty-one. One as amended, thirty-nine as amended, forty-eight, forty-two as amended, fifty as amended, forty as amended. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, sixteen, and twenty-three.
All right, all of the business being suspended, the president will in open session affix his signature hereto to the end that these may become law. It's going to take a few minutes, so let's all enjoy.
So, Mr. President, we have music to entertain us.
We summon the loyalties to the proper. For playing music.
All right, thank you for indulging. I actually ran out of ink with one pen, had to switch pens. All right. Courtesy resolutions calendar, Alderwoman from twenty-fifth, you're recognized on our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we pass our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Entertaining second. I caught the crackling voice of the Alderwoman from the ninth as the first one there, so it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth and second by the Alderwoman from the ninth. That we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, all right. On the twenty-first, reading of resolutions.
Resolution forty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, special committee on long, long-term healthcare facilities.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you're recognized on the first reading of resolution forty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move to send resolution forty-six to the Health and Human Services Committee.
Entertain a second.
Second.
I didn't catch you gave it first, if you could, all right.
Alderwoman eighth.
Sharina, you have it, thank you very much, all right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from six, second by the Alderwoman of the.
Eighth.
Eighth, thank you, that we refer resolution forty-six to health committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries, Madam Clerk, please refer resolution forty-six to Health and Human Services.
So noted.
Second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Misslanious and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
We have none.
All right, I don't see any hands up, this could be your first. All of them from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, you know my hand was going up, first, I wanted to see if Alderman. From the twenty-third was still on because I thought he was scheduling a public safety committee hearing for next week, so I'll leave that. And then I want to say first, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers on the board, and especially fathers in my life, my dad, Joseph Clark. My daddy in love, daddy in love, my father in love, Rodney Hubbard, and of course, my husband, Rodney Hubbard. Happy Father's Day to you all, I hope you all enjoy your weekends, all the fathers in St. Louis as well, and I'm standing in a little bit of a gap here for Alderwoman. Truly missed Alderwoman of the eleventh ward, Sarah Martin, every come upon this Juneteenth game. I want to give opportunities for people that might be listening in the eleventh ward to support some new, newly opened black owned businesses over there. One is the Wind Down Cafe at seventy-five twenty-nine Michigan and Intimate at seventy-three fifteen South Broadway. Well, let's be intentional as we celebrate this Juneteenth holiday this weekend, on my Facebook page, I have several flyers that we get all over the city. You can go to Shemane Clark Hubbard on Facebook and see, get every opportunity to celebrate the emancipation, liberation, and freedom. That is the real meaning behind the Juneteenth holiday, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman, and we have Alderwoman from the sixth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't see it on the agenda, but the Health and Human Services Committee will be. Meeting on June twenty-third at one P M. to receive an update from the mayor's office and the Department of Human Services on. Funding for homelessness in the city of St. Louis, and we will also be learning more about the best practices for unsheltered homeless individuals. That was recently released from an interagency council of the United States government, thank you.
Thank you, Sharina, please make note of that.
So noted.
Thank you, Oliver from the twenty-third, you are next.
Yes, in response to Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, yes, that bill is scheduled to be heard on Thursday morning. It'll be on everyone's calendar letter, it's, it's, normally we do Wednesdays, but because clerk asked to move to Thursday. So it will come out, so Thursday we will be hearing that, and expected to be a fairly long meeting, so. But that will be on Thursday.
All right, thank you, sir, Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to acknowledge that this weekend. Yes, Happy Father's Day to all fathers, guardians, and those who support. Young people in general, but please take time to attend a Juneteenth celebration. I personally know of about sixteen of them taking place throughout the city, so there ought to be one near all of us. And just go by and say hi and participate and hopefully learn a little bit. There's a lot of history is going to be told in a different way this year, the celebrations are going to be more about. The history and the understanding of where we are today in this world, so I thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, two quick announcements, I do know one of our black owned business that's eighth ward adjacent. I believe it might, might be in the nineteenth, patisserie Chauquette is having some really delicious specials this weekend for for Juneteenth. So please check that out, and also tonight is the South Grand dine Around. If you are interested in checking out a bunch of different restaurants down in the South Grand area, you pick up, you, you sign up ahead, or I think you can probably buy them there. But you pick up tickets and move around to different restaurants, drinks, appetizers, entrees at different restaurants around the South Grand area. It's, it's a really exciting, if you're ready to sweat and be outside and enjoy some delicious food, tonight is the dine around, thanks so much.
Thank you, Alderwoman, Oliver from the seventh, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, couple announcements here, first of all, at the request of the new HUDZ chairman, I just wanted to announce that. HUDZ is meeting Wednesday at one P M. to take up resolution nineteen, I know S L D C staff will be there to discuss it and talk about how that project came to be. Also, the mayor's office and various cabinet members will be present to give a presentation. Updating us on ARPA spending, where we are at, you know, kind of giving us progress reports, they made themselves available. And lastly, you know, if anyone's interested, I know Monday. Afternoon, I believe around four thirty or five, you should have an email from Judge Mason somewhere in your inboxes. The Freedom Statue unveiling at the Civil Courts Building will be happening on Monday afternoon, it's a big project. And very exciting, a lot of dignitaries will be in attendance speaking, hopefully the weather, it's not quite as hot as it is today for this outdoor ceremony. But I hope you all can join the Freedom Statue unveiling on Monday afternoon outside the Civil Courts Building, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Oliver from the third, you're recognized.
Thank you, we have an annual father and son camping in the park event coming up on Friday, we also have a Juneteenth event happening on Saturday at Fairgrounds Park. So for those folks who are watching, like to bring your son out and have a camping in the park experience in Hyde Park, you can bring him out starting six o'clock Friday afternoon. Go all the way to four o'clock Saturday, the next day, and then Saturday will, Sunday will have a parade coming down Natural Bridge. To Fairgrounds Park and have a Juneteenth celebration.
All right. Okay, okay. No further announcements, no further announcements. All right, Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to excuse the older people from the first and thirteenth ward due to necessary absence.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, I'll entertain a second.
Second. Second.
All right, moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, second by Alderwoman from the fourteenth, we excuse the Alderman from the first thirteenth wards, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it, okay, I am twenty-five finally. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, I would like to adjourn until Friday, June twenty-fourth at ten A M., location to be determined at this juncture.
All right, thank you very much. It's been moved, do we do adjourn, I'll entertain a second.
Second. Second.
Second by Alderwoman from the sixth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much, we will adjourn to June twenty-fourth, it's been a pleasure, see you next week.